Hello everyone, welcome to I A C. So here we are, target S S C C G L C H S L, English Session 4 discussion. Let us start. First question. First question, what is it? Spotting error, space question, let us answer this, right? Keep him at an arms length lest you may not repent in the long run. So, first of all, we have to observe, what is it? At an arms length, what is it? This is normal, idiomatic. So, at an arms length, we have to remember idiomatic. Idiomatic means, so not become close with someone, not become friendly with someone. If you are friendly, if you are close, then you have to be at an arms length. If we have to say, one has to be thorough, otherwise, thorough pattern, keep someone at arms length. This is what we have to do, keep, okay? Keep someone. Keep someone or something. Keep someone or something at bay. Okay? Keep someone or something at bay. This is also my switch, my language is different. If you are close, if you are involved, you have to affect, keep someone or something at bay. At bay, okay? These two idiomes, right? Next, what is the problem? Is it correct? Idiomatic expression is correct. So, lest you may not repent. We have to repent, regret, repent is not allowed. Meaning, we have to know. And what is it, if you are thorough, otherwise, you have to be long run. You have to be long run, that is, meaning, okay? But, meaning, convey, right? But, convey, let us see, let us see, let us see, let us see, should be. Let us see, what is combination, should be. Can you say, major, may not, should be. What is it, should be, let us see, should be. May be, but, what is it? Below, below, what is it? Option B, right? So, B, what is it? So, part B, what is it? D, what is it? Part B, what is it? Option, this is simple one, right? Now, let us go for the next question. Let us answer second question. What is it? Sentence, right? Select the part that contains the error. Again, what is it? Spotting error, let us answer this one, right? It is misleading to imagine that computers can think same like human beings, right? So, computers, too, we have to think, humans, too, think. And, in this sentence, it is different, but, it is not conveyed. So, first, we have to see, what is the difference? So, largely, we have to tell. Otherwise, like, as, okay? Like, as, difference, right? Here, two statements, observe, right? Like your friend. Like your friend. Okay? Next, as your friend. Like your friend, as your friend. These two, what is the difference? So, it is correct, like your friend, as your friend. But, difference, like your friend, and as your friend. So, difference, right? Like your friend, meaning, what is it? Friend, not, like your friend, friend, like. It is similar to, similar to. So, like, what is it? Similar to, similar to. Your friend, not, friend, like. If you are friend, how can you help? I will help you, what will you help? Friend, like, like. As your friend, not, not. As your friend, I help you, not, not. Not a friend, not a friend, so, in place of someone, in the role of, indeed? In the role of. Okay? In the role of. In the role of, as, this difference, we have to know. Like your friend, is similar, not, your friend, like, not. Otherwise, your friend, as your friend. But, this difference, we have to know. Like, is similar to, as, in the role of. Suppose, as your brother, not, meaning, your brother name. Otherwise, as your brother. Like your brother, not, your brother, not, but, your brother, like. This difference, we have to tell. First, we have to see, like, as, right? It is misleading to imagine that computers can think same. Already, we have to say, already, already, like, not. But, we have to say, like, not. Like, not, similar to, not, already, same, not, similarly, similar to. That role, not, otherwise, human beings, like. Human beings, role play, no, the role only, computers, play, convey, so, same as. This is true. If not, directly, we have to put, same as. Okay? We have to say, same as, not, same like, not. We have to say, same as, not, same as. Then, we have to say, same like, anyway. Otherwise, we have to say, same like, but, same as, okay? Otherwise, like, as, differences, okay? So, what is it, answer, okay? We have to say, like, not, same, easy question, right? Now, let us go for the next question. Let us answer this question. So, passive voice, let us try to answer this, right? So, we have to say, passive voice, yes, yes. Passive voice, yes, first, observe, what is it? Verb, form, observe, right? Here, we have to see, verb, form, so, insulted, right? So, insulted, what is it? V two, insulted, what is it? V two, V two, past. First, we have to see, like, not. We have to say, if, we have to, V two, right? Active voice, V two, passive voice, what is it? Passive voice, what is it? Was, not, was, plus, V three. This, we have to learn, we have to say, before, we have to say. First, we have to, V two, passive voice, was, was, plus, V three. Single, was, plural, was. Here, you, 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 obviously, was, was, not. But, we have to, option, where is it? What is it? Was, eliminate, not, not. Next, we have to say, point, tell. Point, what is it? If, not, if, not, we have to, active voice, question, okay? Active voice, V two, passive voice, was, was, plus, V three. Next, we have to say, normal, active voice, active voice, question, okay? Passive voice, also, we have to, question, not, otherwise, speech, this is different. Speech, so, direct speech, question, inside, as a statement, not, speech. But, voice, only, active voice, question, passive voice, also, question. But, question, what is it? Normal, helping, helping, subject, this is, question, not, question. But, active voice, helping, helping, passive voice, helping, plus, subject. Otherwise, we have to, subject, plus, helping. Otherwise, statement, not, statement. Subject, helping, not, statement. Otherwise, helping, subject, same, question, right? Active voice, question, passive voice, also, question, not, this is, largely, we have to know. First, we have to see, what is it? Next, we have to say, who, by whom? Because, passive voice, proportion, by, in the part, object, subject, object, subject. Object, subject, object, proportion, by, but, any, choose, so, whom, by whom? But, you, by whom? By whom? But, we have to say, you, you, what is it? Were you, were you, was, but, eliminate, by whom? Were you insulted? This is correct. So, we have to observe, what is it? Helping, helping, human, subject, helping, subject, and, question, not, right? Here, by whom, that is fine. Here, human, subject, helping, and, subject, helping, not, statement, statement. This is, were you, question, were you, question, statement. We have to say, active voice, question, passive voice, question, not, but, answer, T, eliminate. This is, right? So, we have to examine, what is it? Just, two, three steps, check, right? First, what is it? Verb, what is it? Verb, V two, was, was, was. So, you, what is it? First point, right? Next, we have to say, active voice, question, passive voice, question, not. Question, reform, first, helping, subject, but, this is, easy, okay? Now, let us go for the next question. Right, we have four to five questions, sentence improvement questions, let us answer these, right? He will lose, he will lose all his wealth if he doesn't mend his base. So, problem, first, what is it? If, 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 if. Normal, if class, okay? Next, main class, if class, main class, right? Class, not, subject, 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 if, 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 that is, right? But, we have to say, combination, important, man, if, 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 V one, if, if, V one, V one, not, V one. This is, zero condition, okay? This zero condition, you have to use, facts, you have to use, suppose, sunrise in the east.
So my first one loves to give gifts, gifts you don't get it, okay? See, if I have a gift, I will give it to you. Okay, I will give it to you. Idioms, literal meanings, as it is meaning, actual meanings. There are various meanings, I will tell you. Next, we use it to grabbing others' gifts. We will see what happens when we give gifts. Gifts happen, but they are literal meanings. This is not true. What is it? Rights, rights very well. Writing is not true. We will talk about it. Fluent speaking is not true. But writing is true. Next, last question, talks. Talks, we can speak in words, talks well and persuasive. Normally, persuasive is not a meaning. If you are convinced, you can do that. Persuasive is not true. If you are convinced, you can do that. You can argue through arguments, you can argue through discussions, convince yourself, you can persuade yourself. But my answer is, option D. So for this question, our answer is what? Option D. Now, let us go for the next question. Eighth question, so ninth question, right? So my question, is it true? This is my question, one word substitution, okay? So my question, a quick sudden movement, okay? Sudden, a moment, quick and sudden movement, the name. Speak and talk, we are not talking about language. Movement is not talking about language. But speak, distant, far, distant, it is not true. It is not true. What is it? Flex, normally, flex and meaning is spot. Okay? My shirt, I will wear, surface, I will wear. My, it is not true. Flex, spot, spot, it is not true. Flex, but it is not true. My answer is, flick out, right? Normally, cricket, cricket, to check, comment, what is it? He flicked the ball, so suddenly, he ordered it. Direction, bad direction, flick. I will tell you. But suddenly, he moved, it is not true. Flick, it is not true. So, but this question, my answer is, so flick. So, it is my question, a quick sudden movement. Suddenly, I will say, jerk. So, I will ask you, jerk, okay? Jerk or flick? Jerk, I will say. Sudden movement, jerk or flick, meaning, my question, sudden movement. Right? Now, let us go for the next question. Let us answer, so ten to fourteen questions. My question, close test, let us try to answer this close test, right? So, my first one, an open-minded person. This paragraph, my question, open-minded person, right? Next, I will tell you, I will add it. I will add it, I will add it, I can, I can. Can, we are, we are. And at what time, we are present, right? These points, even if you are close test, add it. So, first, I will add it. This paragraph, what is it? Open-minded person, what is it? Next, I will add it. An open-minded person, right? We are, I can, I can. Accept, okay? I will tell you, right? So, accepting, what is it? Go ahead, what is it? You, I will tell you, keep, so present, I will tell you. But this paragraph, I will tell you, present, I will tell you. Who is it? Open-minded person, but these points, I will tell you. I will tell you. This question, this point, I will tell you. Right? I will tell you, right? An open-minded person can very easily accept as well as respect the person's viewpoint. And meaning, okay? Whoever is open-minded, you are there. Otherwise, you are not accepted, accept, okay? Also, respect, also. Accept, acceptance, usually, respect, also. Why will open-minded? Okay? My two types of people, open-minded people, narrow-minded people. Narrow-minded people, narrow-minded people. Well, other people, they will participate. So, we will say, they will, they will correct. Otherwise, what is it? Narrow-minded. Otherwise, open-minded, meaning, okay? Other people, you can concern, you can view, viewpoints, you can. And other people, you can perspective, you can. And after, they will open-minded. I know it, right? But I will tell you. I will tell you. Respect the person's viewpoint. For other people, other people, what is it? Other, generally, but other person's viewpoint, it is possible. This blank, saying, we will choose, we will do. Directly, we will do, answer, do. Whoever is open-minded, you are there. Other people, you can, so viewpoints, you can accept, respect, also. So, we will do, we will do. Such a person, such a person, who is it? This open-minded person, okay? So, to others' views, other's views, okay? There are others, others, it is not true. Others' viewpoint, we will do directly, blank, we will do. So, paragraphs, I will do. So, change, right? There are others, others. And I will tell you, I will tell you. Other, it is not true. But this question, my answer is, others. What is it? Either, it is not true, either, it is not true. Every, it is not true. Each, right? What is it? Either, either, I will tell you. I will tell you. Either, 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 I will tell you. Each, every, I will tell you. Distribute, so, many, 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 each, every, used. Many, many, and then, one, one, each, every, generally, if you do. Every, specific, each, only, so, either, you are there. Either, you are there.[311.14]
Indukante i paragraph matman kinnalundi present loundi endukame ketchamali accept chinnaleeda A present loundi gavatti such a person na gavatti person munk singler pulaa Singler person singer gavatti verb ke undali yes sundalani undali yes Ee points anna godi miki simultaneous gatamae polokana Smelok seppandramik preyochindi ee paragraph anedi man kinnalundi so simple present loundi gavatti verb veevan raavali A veevan godi miki e two to ochida undaali nexting kopanikanti Person ochaga bata veevan ke undali yes sundalas gani yes gani ay yes gani undalai Ee points anna godi miki simultaneous process chegarite ee kushmi easyga answer chastaranoka Pritha chodamma man kena valu Hey such a person willingly and cordially Seera vekamikki chodamma listen ochinand kavadi ke ochinni listen ochinikavadi ke ochinni listening Man kaliseninga man kanti v four v four raavaladaka munde undali b farm undalika bati Edi man kha answer kaadu okana kavadi ke unda listen listen okay v one ne Kavadi nevun kunna person gada person gavadi kena laga accept ochinaleeda Accept se ochini accept and v one ke ochini yes Kavadi v one ke ochini kavadi v one ke esraavali kavadi kavadi listen listen raadevusni Listens kavadi ke undi listen dosha the past dosha the past kavadi kate I paragraph man kinnalundi present loundi gavatti listen raagud Adi gakamikke ne ochini listenersa dena ochu two raavachaleeda Listens two kavati ee vedanga chuskunaga man kha answer utnante optiondi Edi easy kushne but examination lo ilan tuka konkunisaramanikanti Meaning selidhi ostan ladies and men kandare teresindi venudam Alakuna konisaramaniki meaning seli kunnavasta alandapurukum reenjachchente ee vedanga answer Supo yeduka kottavod ochinaleeda man ka word suppo is some X okana Spelling edi X Y Z spelling and Gani tukame ke ochini X Y Z ochini so vadan ke ochinand X Y Z plus S ochini Vadan ke ochinand X Y Z plus I N G ochini vadan ke ochinand X Y Z okana X Y Z plus E D ochini vadan le ochu simplega X Y Z ochin A word man kiri dan a word man kiri A X Y Z edinavaru meaning kudari man ikunna ipurukuma life flow chodle Alandapurukum reenjachchidi answer chachidu yundu kha answer chachchente verb ke undanukunna man yes Verb ke esunavani kinnunna vekate undaga bati alme answer Kavadi ee concept kutpetkunna ee kushin chedim easy ne ee kushin miki easyga chesara listen two ochi gavatti easy chesara right Chedengad man kilaant kushinsa mali examination lo unfamiliar words ochinapuru A word meaning telidhi apurukuma reenjachchente edi attempt chay chal attempt chay chu Verb ke esundala gavatti alajik man kirishte sarpot Kavati ee kuchu careful galantu ilanti so points niche konoke Now let us go for the next question Listens to others views accepts their different ideas and even goes ahead to implement them dash Man kavadi namaliki implement dam gada man ke ochinand implement ochi implement man kanti verb and Implement man kanti verb verb ma modify chal man kena valu keda adverb raaval What nature man ki ideas ideas nayasama ni accept chedime kaakunda Accept chesitara ta respect chedime kaakunda A respect chesidea sayasinaru implement chesna yala implement chal chodamma Ipurukuma kene avali man ki adverb raaval kada a adverb man kemi utundante man raayutundan Generala generala kiprassama kivo statement ki endlo ochidu man kemi utundante adverb of man raayutundan Kavati suppa ee implement chesidi yala implement chasam Ipuran kutpetkunna man ki kushinsundan eventante when nani gani okana Redante where nani gani redante how Okay when nani kushin ki answer china where nani kushin ki answer china how nani kushin ki answer china What name anta ante add drops anta man right When nani kushin ki answer same atante add above time anta venkante when man keni piti time jepi right Where nani kushin ki answer same anta ante add above place anta might Alakuna how nani kushin ki answer same anta ante add above man runta me anta add above manner Add above time add above place add above manner Ekamik kena vali man implement chasam implement chasapreey kushanagam man ki When nana where nana how nana how nani kushanagam kate Yala implement chasar kavati add above man rosnit Kavati yala implement chasar man ki ala man kha answer Neptu man ki eventual outunna eventual meaning anta finally anta pach Okana eventual man keni pachu finally Kavadi ke ochini and even goes ahead and even goes ahead Even goes ahead anta mali eja person palledu finally anta pala Goes ahead and meaning anta munde kvaludam so finally kada kavati Eventually man chapaasupalade ningkani ondikada successfully kavati man keni chmano Yala implement chasar successfulga implement chasaj pachchala successfulga implement chasar Kavadi kavi ochini habitu alavatka implement chasar alavata alavatka jappalamanad So a ideas veeraval chepna ideas ni alavatka implement chasar anedi Man ki ee context lo anta suit kada no kara formal language Two shadim kala unna kiri ee paragraph anedi formal language lo undiga bati habitually implemented man chappalem Kavadi kena valu successfully implemented better word right Kavadi ke undi clearly implemented implemented man ki clearga unna den alaj appalem Kavadi kuna okay okay pass good man kanti successful A ideas nayasinaru successfulga implement kura chesna Ever open mindedga unda people redante open mindedga unda person So ee vedangana reenjachchente successfulene word ne optiona use coach okay Now let us go for the next question Iprenam thirteen jada right with an open mindset positive and vibrant energy Dash that not only helps such people So kavadi kena vali energy so that not only helps Energy is created was created had been created was being created Ee kushin chali easy and indukama kisi anta ante Man kavadi nevun kunnam ee paragraph matman kinnalundi present loundi kavadi kavadi Help suchinikavadi keeps ochinikavadi accept ochinikavadi goes ochin So pati chodma kavi ochinand v one loch Kavadi man kinnalundi present loundi Me abdor jesham kavi ochini was was man present a past a past kavati nayajchmanam eliminate chay chu Kavadi kavi ochini was again man kanti the past eliminate chay chu kavadi kavi ochini Had again reenjachchana eliminate chay chu kavadi kha answer utnante so easy Indukama kris man kanti present onna vatalo onna four options lo Okay vekka option man k present loundi gavatti man k paragraph matthap present loundi gavatti Man this course na option man kanti is created so easy one right So energy is created that not only kavadi kha answer utni option ye very good right Now let us go for the next one Fourteen fourteen kavi ochin chodama man ki That not only helps such people man kavi ochini not only ochidu kada Man kavadi not only thartha combination man kanti but also kada Alladman kavi ochinna also ochinni kavati man you just in word and just but Anta kada but also not only but also Edi man ki direct question man easyga chesiyach Kavati answer utman ki not only but also see option is Ee paragraph man ki five questions or four questions man ki easyga So two to three attempt chay chana Kavadi man k examination iran kushinsusthe man kavi scoring opportunity man feel kavala Right now let us go for the next one Ee man kavi chare anta man ki speech kushin chare okana So nakki speech kushin chesidapuru Speech kushin chesidapuru first abdor jesham kavi nevun kunnam reporting verb Man kira reporting verb evunna chodamma Report man kavi ochinni set two set two anagam man kinnalundi v two V two lo undaga broonki present a past a past Kavati man kha pasta evundu ni back shift undan evundu ni back shift Edi mika changa always regenage chegala Edi ipurayata reporting verb man kha past lo undu kexam man kavi evundu the back shift Back shift and meaning anta ante tendesenne goda venakamartai Present evan utni past outni past evan utni past perfect outni Kana past perfect ne man kha change unna den kate Past perfect ne edi past perfect gana undu present past 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 perfect outni but past perfect man ki no change A veku point right next man ki ee back shift lo goda man kha exception unna Ente iprenam direct speech lo ochevi so truths ankun okana So truths gani habits gani redante general statements gani unna ankun Alandapurukuma kadi direct speech lo enasare Indate speech lo enasare present lo ne untena Man kavi pranansare sunrise in the east anna ankoni Adi active sorry adi man ki speech lo direct speech lo sunrise in the east Indate speech lo goda sunrise in the east Kavati alanti facts ochidapuru kexam man kinnalundi Simple present lo undan but alakkaakunda eda nasa normal statement Normal statement cheppeyapuru kexam man kena valu back shift raavali Ipuru reporting verb man edi past lo undan ee point miki teleya right Ipriti chodamma man kavi ochinno So the baby has been crying okana Man kavi undi the baby has been crying Kavadi kavi ochini has man kavadi kutpetkunna man kavi has ochinand Has ochinna man tense undan ante perfect evundu ni perfect Ipurayasa ipurayasa man ki half forms ochchand haska ochu Howka ochu hardka ochu ochchand Kexam man kavi evundu kama man ki perfect undan right Next man kavi ochinni bean bean man kanti b farm bean man kanti b farm B farm ochinna kexam evundu ne kada continues evundu ni continues Miki teleya okana So man first time man keni utamante Ee direct speech lo ichina tense osna okana ee direct speech lo ichina tense osna right Kavadi kavi ochini so has ochinigavati has man kanti half form Ipurayasa man kavi half forms ochchand man kavi evundu ni Perfect tense undu gavatti askunam perfect tense and askunam Next man kavi ochinni bean bean man kanti b farm B farm gavatti epuricham man kavi evundu ni continuous tense undu gavatti adharskunam Next man kinko tenanti time decide here Time decide here li time A time decide here man kavi ochinikavadi kavi ochinni has Has and v one v two na v one kada has have rundo v one ne had man kanti v two Kavadi man ki v one lochidu kavati time evutni v one gavatti present A v two was the past Advaena v one was the present v two was the past A will was the future kavati present past future Kavadi kinnalundi present loundi kavati Matthani tense man kanti present perfect continues tense man kanti present perfect continues Man direct speech lo direct speech lo present perfect continuesusthe Man kendi speech man kena vali so ee man kavi maranukunnam time maralokana Present evaipawali past ipaw kavati thante evaithi Past perfect continuous ipaw evaipawali Past perfect continues Again man kene avali perfect kavati evaivali half forms raavali Kavadi kinnalundi past lo unda kavati half forms eda undali V two lo undali v two lo undu half form man kanti had okana Plus enavali continues kavati enavali bean Plus man kavi active man ki so active way se kavati speech roney active way samantokana Speech roney active way kavadi kibifan man kena vali V four kavati enavali had been crying raaval enavali Had been crying raaval kavati Ekka deet man kha had been crying undu ala man kha answer ya chancha First time chodamma right So had been crying all day Kavi ochini had been crying all day Had been crying all day Connect chikka ochinni had been crying all day possibility Kavi ochinni has eliminate kavi ochinni has And man keni chachchandi simplega option C ni option D indate Eliminate change indukuma man ki ichinandantam man kha present perfect ochin gavatti So man khi indate speech man khi past perfect continues ochin gavatti reenjachchmano Option C option D man direct eliminate chesiyach Ipurak kere unna kara e unni b Puri renitlo vadan man pictures Chomak kavi ochinno So my mother said to man preevali my mother told me and raavalgani Aravind told me mother and jappo Kavi ochini my mother said to me Aravind kavi ochini aravind Yaravind avali man ki meani Advaena kavati man kavi epurukuma man ki sala chedapuru first person evunta So second first second person evunta evunta Second person epurukuma man ki reporting verb ki Reporting verb ki subject evan utarant first person utaro Reporting verb ki abit evan utar man khi second person utara point with petkunna Reporting verb ki subject evan utar first person Reporting verb ki reporting verb ki right subject evan utar first person ever speaker Reporting verb ki abit evan utar second person te listener evan utara point man kutpetkunna So anyway kavadi kena gududu Aravind told and raaguda man kena valu my mother raaval my mother told and raaval Kavati my mother told me kavati answer utman ki option B Aravind jappaladen my mother told me and raavalgani Aravind told me and raaguda kavadi kha answer utnante option be easy question right Man kha examination lo sthe edi miss kaagudan okay Now let us go for the next question So kavadi kena vali man ki right so sixteen to seventeen kushan kavadi kanti v Right antanams man kavi karekara antanamsari kara Then kantamikari kama man ki error okay So first time man keni delialante error ante endu deliala right Suppose then atam godu kushin nayasante Or statement asachore to air okay To air is human edi kutpetkunna okana To air is human and meaning anta ante Tapulu chedimana edi manava sakazam alakutpetkunna So normalga humans sayasar mistakes chasar Ani jeppeyapuru evantamante to air is human anta Kavadi man kavi ochinand two year kada kavadi kavi ochin Easy is man kanti verb Eman kavi avali man ki subject avalokana V man ki verb gavatti man kavi avali subject kavali Subject plus eprenam man kena vali two plus v one gani redante v four Edi kutpetkunna right Ipurayasa edi man kavi evan ochu Subject ka ochu redante object okana Subject gani abit gani kavala anta man kavi undali Two plus v one gani redante v four Suppo yala unna ankun singing singing is my passion Singing is my passion edi use chesamu v four To help others is a noble act to help others is a noble hack Andapurukuma kena vali two plus v one Ee vedanga subject plus rogani redante abit plus rogani man kushin apurukuma kena ochu Two plus v one gani redante v four gani raavu Chodamma kavi ochinni two plus v one Onakada two years so error evaithi man ki v one out right Man kavi was logic chepna Right man kela unna ankun sing unna ankun okana Singesavan name anta man singer anta Ente evan justam ear address okana Dance chesavan name anta dance ante evan justam ear address right Mari collect chesavan name anta collector Evantamu collector kavati evan justam over Ante iprenam man ki single collecten man kivi verbs Man kanti verbs verb kavi evan justam kara ear kare evan justam over Man ki verb ki argani organ add just man kavi evasne ante nouns osne Evasne nouns a point miki teleya okana Verb ki argani organ add just man kavi evasne nouns Ekamik kavi ochinni error nevun verb kada A error man keni sayasamante or Prevevadva man ki error evaithi ee point miki teleya So error ki or is same edi error Error anta man kanti mistake error anta man kanti mistake Alak tapu chedan name anta ante error anta man Alak tapu chedan name anta error ee point miki teleya Alak tapu chedan name anta ante error anta Evantamu error so error 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 Kavadi man ki edi man kanti tapu chedam Man kavi kare cinema kare anta man kare anta man kare Then kantamikare tapu chedam guricham anta man kavi Kha answer utnante correct outunna evasni Correct okay ekunna man kadi option below right Ekamik kavi ochinni blender blender anta man kanti mistake kada This cinema outni man kari kendi anta gavatti go with car Deviate man kanti divert type or okana So deviate avan meaning anta divert avan So vaka root lo vellasima veer root levnta anta man Divert deviate anta divert anta Or vedanga chayalsin man veer vedanga chesem antamu Deviate anta man divert anta So avedangam man ki deviate man keni edi divert outni Please gentlemen teresindi kada right so Please kinko kinko ga right word godasun amuse and asku Chanasu amuse and godasu please leden amuse Pidika opposite kena asku chand annoy and annoy godasu annoy okana Please kavadi kena asku chu annoy ee words kutpetkunna Please amused annoy okay So ee vedangana man kha answer utnante correct okay Now let us go for the next question Ekamik kavi reluctant normal gavansare reluctant ka unna ru anna ankun Reluctant ka unna ru ante then meaning anta ante Okay yavranasare yavranasare reluctant ka unna ru then meaning anta ante Walla pani chedanik sitangalere ne Advaena sente walla willinga unna ru unvillinga unna ru unvillinga unna Kavadi man ki reluctant ki cinema evasni unvillinga unna Reluctant cinema evasni unvilling Kavadi man kari kendi sixteen seventeen kushin renitlo man kavi kare Anta man kare anta Kavadi man kena radu unvilling raadu Man kavi ochin mari so right willing willing chappal keni pachmano enthusiastic Yavranasare enthusiastic ka unna anta vela unna unwillinga unna Pani chedanik ready ka unna right Ipuripu chadamant ready ka undan name anta willing anta redante antamu enthusiastic Ee word miki teleya Anda normalga reluctant cinema man kavi ochinni unvilling Kari kendi anta man kavi nechunnam enthusiastic Kriinko word good niche konna right Alain ante jealous Kana man kavi pronunciations edena gani spelling edi right J E A L O U S Jealousan meaning man kanti anta enthusiastic Man kilaant man kinko word unna kavadi kanti jealous Okay je to je to je to unte jealous man kavi evaithi asuya Then name anta ante envy asantam eventam envy asuya Advaena jet je rundo different right Je to jealous unte evaithi asuya then name anta envy asantam Alakuna jet to unte jealous evaithi man ki enthusiastic ee word miki teleya right Next man kavi kene kavadi man ki revoke Revoke chedman meaning anta cancel revoke chedman meaning anta man ki cancel Eda nasa cancel chedanam man evantamante revoke anta man right Kavadi root word evan ante v o c root word man kavi undi V o c eda man ki v o c gani v o k gani Unta evan utnante to call and jepchand Jepchu to call v o c gani v o k gani Unta man kavi evaithi to call Man kala usnante invoke invocation revoke revocation provoke provocation Convoke convocation See vedangana man ki v o c gani v o k evasne kavi evaithi Right so ka to call us right So revoke and meaning anta eda nasa order whichi order ichi Then venakis kundan name anta revoke Man reenjashnam ala order ichi venakis kundamant Order neenjashnam implement chasama cancel chasama cancel chasam Alak cancel chedan name anta ante revoke anta right Ekamik milin nevun di different a different in a word explain yasata jathka chodan right Normalga man kavi root word evan ante fit undan Man kavi pransare ee root words kutpetkunna Credit gani redante fit gani Okay credit gani fit gani washe akam kavi evundu ante believe undu Evundu ni believe redante evundu ante trust undu Believe redante trust undu redante faith and gurichapu Jepchu faith okay faith belief trust redante faith Ipuru horas chodan right a word man kanti ante confident A word man kanti confident Ee vedangaga ni word ras kundam kavi ochinni fit ochin right Preyasante redenu ee word ni break chasata Yala break chasanta kara co co ante with fit ante trust namakam So E N T man keni piti suffix epurukuma parts of speech cheppeyapuru Advaena ipurukuma keni piti parts of speech Man ki prefix meaning cheppeyapi root word meaning cheppeyapi Suffix man keni piti ante parts of speech Suppose intelligent unna ankun generala Intelligent man kavi ochinni adjective Intelligence evan utni noun brilliant evan utni adjective Brilliant evan utni noun ee vedanga suffix man keni piti adjective chepna right Kavati confident man khi E N T man keni piti Confident anedi adjective anjepu right Akam man khi E N T kaka koni E N C E ochinna koni confidence Edi evan utni noun confident adjective confidence noun So vedangana man ki so chuskunte confident kadi kari Ko ante vittu fitantante namakam Walla payna walla konamak muddan name anta confident anta Mari namakam lakvuthen jali chodamma right Ipurukuma khi fit fit gara unstam namakani E N T E N gara unstam Puri normalga advantage unna ankun Advantage okay advantage lakvuthen anta disadvantage Anu yeha chay chu discharge chay chu So man ki enta vunne ochinni co co anta man kanti with okana Co anta man kanti with man disentante So advantage disadvantage Lakvuthen kavati vittu without ne pachchada Edi with belief edanti without belief Puri jathka abdor jeshthe confident adjustment kavi evaithi confident Madhya action evasni yen ochinni Co fit redende confident Man kavi ochinni piss ochinand disfitant Irundu joinist man kavi evasante diffident evasadi Diffident kavati confident ka opposite evaithi different Walla medavalk namak mudda evaithi confident Walla medavalk namak lakvuthen evan utni different So different man keni pachchante shy and jepchu Ledante kovad and jepchana okana Kovardly okana fearful and jepch Yarate ur ur ke bai parutna ru alantavall jepchande different and jepch Kavati ee vedangana ee word miki kuttunna Anyway so man kha answer edikama man ki enthusiastic Enthujusting kinko meaning nepukunam manam jealous Jet under jet jealous or jealous Jet under okade je unte jealous unte evaithi envy Adhur kutpetkunna right now let us go for the next question Ekamik kavi kare kama man ki two words icharit kavi kare Same in the same in same in meaning Kavi kare cinema sarigara Enta vunnu var keni chesamam anthem chesam preyasamante cinema chesam Let us start with this right indoors Man kavi eda nasa man indoors chasamante Indoors chasamant nejasavati ni accept chasam Nejasamu accept chasamu inka approve chasamu okay Inka what nejaso support chasam nejasam support Normalga man kha celebrity sayasaru so right Kunni products keni sayaru endorsement chasar Ante nayasinaru a product manchidhe jepi Anta koran ne jepi anta chuttnar Anta vallayasinaru product ni right accept chasnaru approve chasar Ante support chasar ala Edi vaka product ni accept chedani approve chedani support chedani anta Endorse anta Kavadi man kavi kare cinema kare anta man kare Cinema kare man cinema evasne jappan mari So debate evasne normalga debate and meaning anta ante degree and jepchana okana Degree debate man kanti degree Eda nasa veka personik ka ochu veka think ka ochu kaidya ka ochu right Daikunna value ni takin chedani eventamante debate anta Jepchu degree degree ipotokana Reputation ka ochu redante quality ka ochu Takipurun name anta manam debate anta Redante degree anta debate are degree anta Kavadi man kavi undi advocate advocate even meaning anta support Advocate man kanti support Normalga advocate sandaga loyal samantam advocate Walla nejasaru support chasar Walla quite nejasaru support chas Avedangam kutpetkunna kavati advocate man kavi evaithi support right Man kavi undi debunk man debunk and meaning evaithante so prove redante expose Okana expose the False ideas and then false statement Okana iprenasare eda vaka false idea unna Vaka false story unni Vaka false story edi true kaadu False story dann man reenjashamante expose chadam Karthkaadu jepi expose chedani anta ante debunkant Redan man ki mit unna mit mit anta man kanti manu Then ite true and prove jela Vela vane false and prove jela Then name anta mit anta Kani konisara nejasarante Amithni konstamane nejasar debunk chesar Meaning anti a mitari karthkaadu and prove chesar Then name anta ante debunkant Anda iprenasare vaka false idea unnapuru Vaka false story unnapuru Vaka false ah false news edi circulation unnapuru Theni false and prove jeda Adi true kaadu false and prove jeda Name anta ante debunkant Kavati man kavi edi guda answer kaadu right So man edi answer kaadu Debate answer kavadi kari kendi endorse anta unkunam Accept gani approve and support So answer utman ki advocate Mili nevun di maling okay Malin anna preevar kavi ochinand mal Man kavi pransare root word mal ochinand man kanti bad Okana kutpetkunna right Kavati maling ante meaning man kanti spoil Jepchu spoil Malin meaning anta spoil Then jepchand de fame and jepch Jepchu de fame suppose man society lo ever kana sari Man ched reputation unna ankun Man society lo ever kana sari man ched reputation unna ankun right So vallakunna a fame ne ka ochu a reputation ka ochu Valla gurich badka jepi Then spoil chedanik name anta ante maling anta right Then name anta maling so spoil eda nati fame Then inkola yala kutpetkunna chand Then man thirugulu sevam ankun thirugulu Thirugulu sevam man kavi evan utni maling Ante evan utni malinam evan utni malinam Andam man kene nasa malinam chasamant Then nejasnato spoil chasnato Then nasa malinam chasamant Then nejasnato manam spoil chasnato Kavati ee vedangana goda man kutpetkunna right Anyway ee kushin man answer utnante advocate right now let us go for the next question So man kavi undu nineteen chodam kavi undu right fill in the blank on the mali Edi answer chadam right Okay he reacted to the criticism And dash handed in his resignation does putting an end to a promising career